Well, good evening. If you're joining me on Wednesday evening, this is September the 9th. If you're joining me on Sunday morning, about a month after that, then welcome and good morning to you. If you're just joining us, I have to do it that way because first run is Wednesday night, September 9th. Because our Sunday morning issue of this study is about a month behind, then if you're seeing this on a Sunday morning, it's somewhere in mid-October. Either way, I'm glad to have you with me tonight to study Paul's Letter to the Romans, the letter that changed the world. And we're in chapter 5, verses 12 through 21. And I would ask that you join me as I always like to before we read God's Word, we actually speak to Him. So if you would join me as we pray. Father, I pray that you would bless our time of study this evening. Lord, that you would continue to open our eyes and illuminate our minds and activate our hearts, energize our wills, so that after looking into the depths of this incredibly deep letter that we call the Book of Romans, Lord, that we would be transformed more nearly into the image of your Son, Jesus, who is after all the point of all that we do, and that we would be a people more like Him and more pleasing in your sight, more useful for your service, and ask in His name. Amen. Well, again, I'm really glad to have you join me this evening or this morning, as the case may be. And I will remind you of where we are in Paul's Letter to the Romans. As I say, it's chapter 5, verses 12 through 21. And for some reason, you've lost me, but that's not that, it's not a big deal. You know what I look like. Here's where we are in the outline. We've done the introduction in chapter 1, the theme or the overture, verses 16 and 17 in chapter 1. We've done the exposition or the explanation of the one who is righteous by faith. I should back up. The theme, "The One Who Is Righteous By Faith Shall Live." And then Paul breaks it down and spends the next three-plus chapters, as we reckon it, talking about the one who is righteous by faith, the person. And now in chapter 5, on through the end of chapter 8, he is expounding upon, explaining, elaborating on what he means when he says, "The one who is justified by faith shall live." And now you got me back. So I'm not sure why, normally when I go to a slide like that, you should see me in the upper right-hand corner of your screen. That's probably not going to happen tonight, but again, you probably remember what I look like, and I will not have gotten any better-looking tween slides, so not to worry about it. Let's read the passage together, if you will. I am reading out of the New American Standard, because that's just the Bible I grew up with as a Christian. It's not the easiest Bible to read, but it is very accurate, and I like it for that reason. You read along with me, or read it out of whatever translation you're comfortable with. I'm well pleased to have you read along with me, whatever Bible best suits you, wherever you are in your level of Christian maturity. So here we go. Chapter 5, verses 12 through 21. Paul writes, "Therefore," now I'll just add, "because of everything he said up to now. Therefore, just as through one man sin entered into the world," and that's a reference back to Adam, the first man, "and death through sin; and so death spread to all men, because all sinned. For until the law sin was in the world, but sin was not imputed, is not imputed when there is no law. Nevertheless, death reigned from Adam until Moses, even over those who had not sinned in the likeness of the offensive Adam, who is a type of him who was to come. But the free gift is not like the transgression; for if by the transgression of the one the many died, much more did the grace of God and the gift by the grace of the one man, Jesus Christ, abound to the many. The gift is not like that which came through the one who sinned; for on the one hand, the judgment arose from one transgression resulting in condemnation; but on the other hand, the free gift arose from many transgressions resulting in justification. For if by the transgression of the one death reigned through the one, much more those who received the abundance of grace and of the gift of righteousness will reign in life through the one, Christ, Jesus Christ. So then, as through one transgression there resulted condemnation to all men; even so, through one act of righteousness there resulted justification of life to all men. For as through the one man's disobedience the many were made sinners, even so through the obedience of the one the many will be made righteous. The law came in so that the transgression would increase, but where sin increased, grace abounded all the more, so that as sin reigned in death, even so grace would reign through righteousness to eternal life through Jesus Christ, our Lord. As I read that passage out loud to you, I've been buried in studying this passage for several days and interacting with some of the really great theologians and pastors and thinkers. And as I read that passage to you now, I realize I'm not going to begin to cover all of it, and really, there's no way. Paul's letter is so deep that we could spend weeks, months, on any given chapter. Otherwise, if I do that, either I'll die before we get through the Book of Romans, or you'll die of boredom, and I can't go this slowly. So for those of you who would like more detail, all I can say is, I'll introduce you to some of these people and some of the great thinkers and writers and theologians. Read their works if you want. I don't need to spoon-feed it to you if you want that kind of detail. And for those of you who say, "Yeah, thanks, Ken, but no, I don't need that much," well, you're welcome, because we are going to have to cover a lot of ground in this passage, and we won't begin to cover it all. But I'm going to try at least, try to hit the most important points, hit the high spots, so to speak. If I can say, there's high points in this whole chapter, this whole letter. I mean, it's just, it's hard to skip any of it. So Paul begins here by talking about one act of righteousness, and by this, he's contrasting it with one act of sin or transgression. He's comparing and contrasting the first man, Adam, with the second Adam, Christ. And so he says, begins saying, "Just therefore," again, you always got to ask, "Well, what's it therefore? What's it referring back to?" "Because of everything I've said up to now about how through Adam's rebellion, we were all plunged into sin. Therefore, just as through one man, sin entered the world." But he doesn't really complete the thought there. He sort of goes on a little bit of a parenthesis or a digression. He goes down a rabbit trail, or a friend of mine might call it a side road. So he doesn't really finish the thought right there. He goes down this side road, this rabbit trail, this digression, and so we need to look at what he is digressing to talk about here. What were the consequences brought by the one man, the first man, Adam? Paul says it, "Sin entered the world, and through sin, death." Let me take you back, back in time, to the very first heartbeats of humanity. How old the world was at that point? I don't claim to know, but this is when we first meet the first humans, the first pair, Adam and Eve. And do I really believe there's a real historical Adam and a real historical Eve? They're not just symbolic mythological prototypes that Moses is writing about in the Book of Genesis? Yes, I believe Moses wrote Genesis? No, I don't believe they're mythological prototypes. I think there's a real Adam and a real Eve. Yeah, that's what kind of Neanderthal I am. Pardon me. My own hair seems to be attacking me tonight. I'll try to keep that to a minimum. Anyway, let me take you back to when the world was either brand-brand new or relatively new and perfect, exactly as God had wanted it to be when He made it. Would love to have seen that place. I'd love to have seen Florida before it was settled by human beings. I suppose if I was seeing it, it's impossible. I'd just love to see what this place would look like before there were any human beings here, just to see how beautiful it was. I suspect Eden might have been something like that, but maybe no humidity and definitely no mosquitoes. Anyway, back to Genesis, chapter 2, verses 15 to 17, where God has put the first pair in his perfect garden. Genesis, chapter 2, verse 15 to 17. "Then the Lord God took them in, and put him into the garden of Eden to cultivate it and keep it. The Lord God commanded the man, saying, 'From any tree of the garden you may eat freely; for from the tree of the knowledge of good and evil you shall not eat; for in the day that you eat from it, you will surely die.'" Now, you Bible scholars may know that that's really before God brings Eve into the picture, but the promise and the blessing and the warning are giving to our first parent, Adam. "This place is yours to enjoy. It's going to be a paradise. I'm about to bring you the best thing of all. This creature is going to look a lot like you, only better. You guys are going to be able to enjoy one another in this perfect paradise. It's going to be unbelievable." Just don't touch that tree there in the center of the garden, the tree of the knowledge of good and evil. Yeah, just stay away from that. And everything's groovy. Yes, God said groovy back in those days. He wasn't very hip. I guess at the time, maybe he was hip. And you know what happened? They didn't do any better than you or I would have done if we were put in one place and said, "You can do anything you want, but it's just this one thing you can't do. Don't touch that tree." Well, you know, our human curiosity, who wants to, "Well, what happens if I touch it? Can I touch it just a little? What about that fruit? Looks kind of good, maybe?" That's what happened. And when our first parents disobeyed, that transgression opened the door to sin. That was the first act of sin in this place, and sin brought in every evil known to humanity since that time, including, and most disastrously of all, including death. His sin, his disobedience, his rebellion brought in death. Now, God said, "You touch that tree, you're going to die. The day that you touch it, you will die." So the question that I always like to ask my groups when I can do this live and in persons, "Did Adam and Eve, did they drop dead on the ground when they took that bite of that fruit?" Well, we don't know that it was an apple. We have no idea what it was. Did they drop dead on the ground? No. Well, maybe God was just bluffing. Maybe he was just trying to scare them away from it. No, they didn't drop dead on the ground. Well, maybe, maybe God changed his mind? Maybe God was lying. Maybe he didn't really mean it at all. Again, he was just trying to skip. No. What died that day in the garden, when they took that first fruit, was their ability to please God perfectly in the state in which they were created. What died was their ability to walk and talk with their Creator, to enjoy unbroken, unspoiled, unfiltered, free access to Him, because now they're not just His creatures, His perfect creatures, now they're rebels. They're rebels before a holy and a mighty King. And so, so they brought in sin and death, and they died spiritually at that time. They became spiritual dead people walking. And I won't take time to read it all to you tonight, but I highly recommend that you were done tonight, or sometimes you, read Ephesians 2, verses 1 through 5. Ephesians 2, verses 1 through 5. "You were dead in your trespasses and sins." And the question I always pose to people when we hear that is, "What do dead people do for themselves?" It's a pretty short list. Dead people don't do much for themselves. In fact, they don't do anything. Dead people don't even pray to receive Christ. No, for us to even do that, God has to come along and breathe life into our dead selves. Dead selves, not dead cells, although I guess both are true. Breathe life into our dead persons, every bit as much as He had to breathe life into that first man. Back in Genesis, chapter 2, verse 7, God breathed the breath of life into the man, and the man became a living being. God breathes the breath of life into us, spiritual dead people, dead women, men, young people. And we become living, born again, living creatures in God's light. So we died, they died spiritually that day, and we inherited that from them. We inherited this terminal illness called sin, and from that flows the reformed doctrine that we shorthand call it total depravity, which if you are a Calvinist, you know exactly what it means. You know, there's the tea in the acrostic tulip. If you're not a Calvinist, then I could try to explain all the tea tonight. You could look it up. But what that tea for total depravity means is not that we're all as bad as we could possibly be. And I know this is a review for some of you. We're not as bad as we could possibly be, but that sin has impacted every aspect of our humanity. Every aspect of our lives has been warped and impacted by sin. We have been, we've been stained. And I think I've said before in weeks past, we've been vandalized by the sins we've committed, our own sins and by the sins that others have committed against us. We were God's masterpiece, and it's been vandalized. And when Christ comes to us in salvation, it's very much an act of reversal of that vandalism that our sins have done to us. And so, sin has impacted every aspect of our lives intellectually, emotionally, volitionally, attitudinally, relationally, behaviorally, fill in the adverb, sin has impacted that. And so, that's what we, that's what we inherited from our first parents. Now, if that didn't seem fair, hang on, we're going to get to that in a minute, okay? And that is why, in an era of COVID-19, we were reminded daily how many people have died, not only around the world, not only in this country, but how many people died right here in Miami. We were a hotspot. We were one of the ground zeros of rates of infection. Thank God, we're bringing those numbers way, way down. But until a few weeks ago, I didn't know, personally, didn't know anybody who tested positive with this stuff. A couple of months ago, I guess now. Now I know quite a few who tested positive, and thank God, they've all recovered, except one. I lost a very dear friend a week ago, and I don't know whether it's accurate to say that he died of COVID-19. He had a number of other health problems, and they contracted COVID-19. And I don't know honestly if that's what killed him or not, but I know it was probably the straw that broke the camel's back. And so, death has been knocking on our door a lot over the last six months, more than usual, more than in most, except for times of war, we've seen people die. And if you're like me, sometimes it was an older person, I mean, a much, much older person, and I'm not going to say an age, but the person's had a good, long, full life, and they pass away, you say, "Well, you know, that's what we expect. Expect your grandparents to die before you. Expect your parents to die before you." But still, when somebody we know and love dies, unless that's after a prolonged illness, especially if it's somebody who's our own age or younger, a young person, it just seems like such an obscenity. And there's a good reason for that. We weren't meant for this. We weren't meant for death. We were meant for life. We were meant to live forever, and we still remember. We still, it's in our DNA, somewhere back in it, we were not meant for death. We're meant for life. We're meant to live forever. And that's one reason why at, I think, every funeral, every memorial service I've conducted over the last thirty-seven years, and there've been a lot, a lot, probably at every single one, I have read, the passage comes almost at the very, very end of the Bible from Revelation, chapter 11, chapter 21, verses 1 through 4. Those of you who are Bible readers, or you've just been to a lot of funerals with me, you'll know this passage. John writes, "Then I saw a new heaven and a new earth; for the first heaven and the first earth had passed away, and the sea was no more. And I saw the holy city, New Jerusalem, coming down out of heaven from God, prepared as a bride, adoring for her husband. And I heard a loud voice from the throne saying, 'Behold, the dwelling place of God is with men; he will dwell with them, and they will be his people; and God himself will be with them as their God. He will wipe away every tear from their eyes, and death shall be no more; neither shall there be mourning, nor crying, nor pain anymore, for the former things have passed away.'" Those are some of the most beautiful and most comforting words in all Scripture, that in the final analysis, death doesn't get the last word. So we will say more about that before we're done. But I have to move on, and we'll get there. This death that we picture here in Romans 5, that we inherit from our first parents, this death, this separation, you remember in the immediate space and time event of the fall, right after that, when death enters the world, separation from God begins immediately because Adam and Eve are kicked out of the garden of Eden. They are, they must leave their home, and God posts an angel there with a flaming sword going back and forth, saying, "You're not coming back in here either. This isn't a probation period. You're out. You have been evicted." And they've been cast out from Eden, and they've been separated from God by their sins. And so, that is, in a very real sense, a foreshadowing, a picture of the ultimate separation from God for those who are unreconciled to God at the time of their death. And Paul calls them, the Bible calls them, "enemies of God." God's not going to have his enemies with him forever. I don't enjoy talking about that. I really don't. I've got too many friends and loved ones I know who don't know Christ, and the prospect of them dying without Him is just horrifying me, deeply, deeply disturbing to me. And I've tried to talk to them, haven't gotten very far, and so at this point, the battle for them is in prayer, and I pray for them. And I'm sure you pray for your lost friends as well. So this passage emphasizes physical death, but after Adam's transgression is unleashed on the world, it results in both physical and spiritual death. And what else in this way? Paul says, "Death came to all men, because all sinned." Now, two questions arise here that I can't go into depth on, but at least need to recognize them. First of all, and scholars have debated these for centuries. I, of course, will settle that debate tonight. But I'll tell you what, I'll shine some light on it. Why did death come for all? Why did death come for all? Because of the transgression of the one. And what does Paul mean when he says, "Through him all sinned," as in past tense? Before we were born? Before we existed? In Adam, we all sinned? So what does that mean? Well, since one of these is the cause of the other, we can love it together and say, first of all, that when death entered the world and then spread, it was very much like an uncontrollable virus, and we didn't have a cure for it. We were not prepared to battle this virus, this disease called sin, because it was not what we were made for. We didn't have a vaccine ready for it. We needed a cure, and God provides one for us. So Adam and his sin, and Eve, their sin is the catalyst. Eve gets a pass in this passage, but we know from Genesis. She was involved. She was involved. So because of Adam's sin, this pandemic of death is loosed on the whole world. And then it says, "Because all sinned," and again, that's highly debated from scholars in centuries past. It's a little awkward, but different translations agree that it means it's both, that is what Paul meant, that it's not an accident of language or a poor translation. He meant because. And so, we say, "Because of Adam's sin, we all sin in him." And then we ask, "Well, how did that happen?" It doesn't say that we sin present tense, or that we will, but that we did sin in Adam in the past. And that's going to open up something that I need to touch on, that I will not anywhere near be able to plumb the depths of, but at least need to, at least need to show it to you. And that is, let me preface this. When you hear those words, "because in Adam all sinned," and that happened before we were born, before our parents were born, before our grandparents were born, before any of the rest of us existed, "In Adam we all sinned," then our natural reaction to this, and I've had this conversation with other Christians, pastors, who said to me, "That doesn't seem fair." And I said, "Yeah, I get your point." Maybe 20, 25 years ago, some kids who lived in Juarez, Mexico, Ciudad de Juarez, right across the border from the city of El Paso, Texas, there was a landfill there, and in it, some workers had mistakenly dumped some radioactive wastes, came from a medical facility, and was used in some of the electronic equipment there from radiology labs. Some of that waste got dumped wide open into this landfill. And some kids playing in that landfill found this stuff that, when you picked it up after dark and rubbed it around, it glowed. And so, they would take it and they'd rub around, they'd rub it all over their bodies. "Look at me, I'm glowing in the dark." You can absolutely see a bunch of kids who didn't know any better doing that. Well, you know what happened? They all got radiation sickness. Some died, some lived. Now, that's not fair. It wasn't their fault that radioactive waste was there, and they didn't know any better. All analogies break down. But you could still say, "Yeah, but you kids shouldn't have been playing in a landfill. It was off limits to you." And you did have the option to say, "I don't know what that is or what it does. I'm going to leave it alone." Now granted, most children would not do that, and I get that. Our first parents knew better. "You know what would happen if I eat that fruit, right? If I touch that tree?" Went ahead and did it anyway. We have the option, though, of knowing what sin is and what it does. We know what it is and what it does. We have no excuse, and yet, we continue on in sin. So it may not be fair, but we do have our own sense of our own real complicity in sinning as well. So yes, in Adam, all sinned before we were born. We inherited that sin nature from him. But then, we do get a choice in whether or not we commit individual acts of sin. So because in Adam all sinned and death has come to all people, we talk about Adam then as the federal head of humanity. Adam is the federal head, not just symbolic, but the very real head of humanity, just the way the federal government is the head of the government of the United States. I hasten to add, again, all analogies break down, the federal government is not the highest authority in the land. Remember this when you go to vote. The highest authority in our land is the Constitution of the United States of America. Where the federal government obeys the Constitution? Great, God bless them. Where the federal government or any other governing authority is out of line with the Constitution, then they're wrong, and the Constitution's right, and they need to go. That's for another time. But the federal government is the highest governing institution in our country, and so that's the sense in which Adam is the federal head of humanity. It comes from the Latin word, foetus, F-O-E-D-U-S, which means head chip, not to be confused with foetus, F-O-E-T-U-S, it's spelled in English, not Latin, which means not only baby, but baby mammal. Fetus means baby mammal. We can look it up. Anyway, this introduces something called federal theology. Federal theology, and this gets really deep, and I'm only going to touch on it just barely tonight, but I need to at least, this is one of the most important passages in all the Bible where we learn this, so I need to at least put this up here for you, okay? Federal theology is the doctrine that Adam is the head of all humanity under the covenant of works, and Christ is the head of all humanity under the covenant of grace. Adam is the head of all humanity under the covenant of works. I'm explaining that. Adam is the head of all humanity under the covenant of works. Let me explain that. That's where God told Adam and Eve, "Do these things. Don't do that one thing. And if you obey me, great. Everything's great." We failed at that. And after that, whereas Adam and Eve were able to obey God but did not, after their fall because of their sin, in fact, we inherited the terminal illness of sin from them, after that, we are no longer perfectly able to obey God. And so, then it ushers in the covenant of grace. And there are a number of other covenants we read about in Scripture. The covenant with Noah, the covenant with Abraham, the covenant with Moses, that's usually called the Old Covenant. That's what we usually mean when we say Old Covenant, the covenant with David, the New Covenant. I get the rest of them, covenant of works with Adam and Eve, covenant with Noah, covenant with Adam, covenant with Abraham. How could I skip Abraham? Covenant with Moses, the Old Covenant, and then the covenant with David, and then, New Covenant. But we lump all those covenants under the one covenant of grace under various administrations. So, that is a very quick, very imperfect and inadequate description of what federal theology is about. But if I went through this passage and didn't at least touch on that, I would be doing you a huge disservice. You can read up on this from now till you die, and you'll never get to the end of it, but at least you'll know what the term "federal theology" refers to. Adam is the federal head of humanity under the covenant of works. Jesus is the federal head of humanity under the covenant of grace, okay? Could say a lot more about it, but I need to say at least that much. Now, my namesake Tim Keller, again, no relation, my namesake Tim, I would remind you again, has pancreatic cancer. Please be in prayer for him. He says, "This teaching sounds strange. In fact, it sounds repugnant to modern ears." Modern Western, why? Because we are highly individualistic. The Bible takes a radically different approach, that of human solidarity. We today really are, in this country, so individualistic. And in some ways, that's good, because that way each one of us knows that we have opportunities, we can pursue them, we can make the most out of our own opportunities, better than any country that's ever existed. We can do that as individuals. Praise God. But the downside of that is, we don't think, in terms of family and community, nearly often enough. I won't extrapolate and talk about what I see happening in our culture right now, how much I see it fragmenting and pulling apart. Anybody can turn on the news or read news online and see that. But in general, I think our sin, if I can put it that way, in this country, is to think much too much of ourselves as individuals and not nearly enough of ourselves as part of a greater unit, a family, a community, and so forth. And the Bible is much more family and group oriented, because it's written more from an eastern point of view, not eastern as a near eastern point of view, not from a radical western point of view, because radical western point of view didn't exist at that point. So God speaks to us in those kind of categories. Pardon me. But then, I need to move on. Verse 15, "Christ is seen as superior to..." Oh, I need to move back up and say one more thing on that. Is that where I am in my notes? Sorry. Talk amongst yourselves. Smoke 'em if you got 'em. Just kidding. No, I'm where I should be. All right, so, as I said, "Christ is seen as superior to Adam." I won't reread the whole passage to you, but I need to point out... I should put this back up on the screen for you. Can you? No, I'm not gonna do it. Whatever your translation is, just look up the page with me. I am going to read verse 15 through 17, because I need to emphasize two particular words. The word grace and the word gift. The word grace, the word gift. The word grace, and the root word of that is charis. We would spell it C-H-A-R-I-S. It's what we get our root for. Charismatic or charisma, means gift. Grace, I'm sorry, means gracious, gracious gift. And then, the word gift, all right? So, we've got grace and we've got gift. And so, verse 15 through 17, I'm gonna emphasize some words, see if you can catch them. "But the free gift is not like the transgression; for if by the transgression of the one the many died, much more did the grace of God and the gift by the grace of the one man, Jesus Christ, abound to the many. The gift is not like that which came through the one who sinned; for on the one hand the judgment arose from one transgression resulting in condemnation, but on the other hand the free gift arose from the many transgressions resulting in justification. For if by the transgression of the one death reigned through the one, much more those who received the abundance of grace and the gift of righteousness will reign in life through the one, Jesus Christ." I shouldn't have told you ahead of time how many there were of each. Should've asked you to count. But if you forgot, and you probably didn't count as fast as I read, but again, grace appears three times and gift appears five times. I think Paul's trying to tell us something here. Again, he's comparing and contrasting especially Adam with Christ, because he says, "The free gift is not like the transgression." The free gift is not like the transgression. And he's gonna say, "The free gift is much, much greater." He'll say over and over again, "Much more so does grace abound, much more so is God's gift greater than the transgression. Much more so is Christ's work greater than what Adam did." And so now, we need to point out some other contrast between the two. The motivation at the heart of each for what Adam did and what Jesus did is very different. Adam's act was, Adam's deed was an act of self-aggrandizement. He believed that if he ate that fruit, he would be like God, having the knowledge of good and evil. And that's what he wanted. He wanted to be equal to God, so his act of self-aggrandizement. Jesus' action, he was God, and he emptied himself in the act of supreme self-sacrifice. Adam's self-aggrandizement, Jesus' self-sacrifice. The results of the two deeds are completely opposite. Adam's resulted in death, while Jesus' deeds resulted in life. Adam's resulted in condemnation. Jesus' resulted in justification. Adam's sin resulted, brought about the fact that death reigned, and then, he doesn't say that in Christ, life reigned, but rather that we reign in life. I'll come back to that one, too. The power of the two is very different. Paul takes, goes to great lengths to show that the power and the scope of Christ's work is far greater than Adam's. And as I wrap up tonight, not yet, but when I wrap up, I'm gonna show you something that I got from John Stott's commentary on this that I had never seen before. As many times I've read and studied this past, taught this book before, I saw something this time around that I'd never seen before, and I'm really, I will get to it. If I have to cut other stuff, I will get to it. And so, it's the contrast between what Adam did and what Christ has done, and how much more so Christ's life and His work overshadow and outshine the impact of what Adam has done. So, he ends the contrast with the ultimate effect of what each of them did. Death reigned through the one, that is Adam, but for those who receive grace and the free gift of righteousness, we reign in life through the one, Jesus Christ. So you could, the reasoning is like this. There's justice because all have sinned. That means justice, judgment for everybody. That's fair. All have sinned. All deserve judgment. Those scales balance, if you will. But then there's grace, because one man's obedience resulted in justification for everybody. One man's sin brought about judgment for all, and that's fair, because we all sin in him and sense. The scales balance. And then there's grace, because the one man's righteousness results in justification for us all, even though we're not righteous. "All have sinned and come short with the glory of God," Paul said. So those scales tilt, not in our favor. The great American theologian Jack Benny, those of you who are younger, have no idea who he is. He was one of the best-known comedians in this country 50 years ago, 60 years, a long time ago. But he once said this, after he received a very nice award. He said as follows. "I really don't deserve this award, but then I have arthritis. I didn't really deserve that either." I don't know, I just always thought that was kind of humorous. Hopefully you do as well. All right, now, let me, on a slightly more serious topic, say, humanly speaking, you may not deserve the injury or the illness or the affliction or whatever your genetic predisposition is, the struggles you're in financially, relationally. And again, in the era of COVID-19, you may have had all kinds of trouble hit you, pain hit you, that you didn't cause. That a virus that got out of a lab in China, the death and devastation it's caused. So it may not be fair, right? But if somebody comes along and offers you the cure to it. "So I've got the vaccine right here. Would you refuse it just because what you got wasn't fair?" No, you would jump on it, I think. Some maybe won't. But if it's 100% for sure, this will cure it. So like when you develop the smallpox vaccine. This will work. This will cure you or keep you from getting it. You'd take it. You'd take it, and so would I. Let me go back to what John Stott has to say here. "What Christ has done for us is not just to exchange death's kingdom for the much more gentle kingdom of life, while leaving us in a position of subjects. Instead, He delivers us from the rule of death so radically as to enable us to change places with it and rule over it or reign in life. We become kings, sharing the kingship of Christ, with even death under our feet now and one day to be destroyed." And as Paul puts it in an earlier letter to his friends in Corinth, "The last enemy to be destroyed is death." "I'm looking forward to the day, either at the end of my own life or when God calls a halt to the whole thing, when I can look at death and spit in its face and say, 'You have taken enough. You have done enough damage and destruction. No more.'" Wipe my feet on its face and say, "To hell with you." Death in Hades cast into the lake of fire. Looking forward to that day. Those of you who are readers of the Harry Potter series, and if you're not, why aren't you? Someone told you you shouldn't? Nonsense. The entire seven books is a gospel allegory, I promise. J.K. Rowling's later pronouncements, good and bad, notwithstanding. The entire Harry Potter franchise is a gospel allegory. If you've read the books and/or seen the movies, you should know what I'm talking about. But when she introduces the last book, Book Seven, The Deathly Hallows, with that quote, "The last enemy to be destroyed is death," she doesn't say it's 1 Corinthians 15:26. She just puts that quote in there. And if you had any doubt up to that time, where she was going with the series, that should have removed all doubt. Those of you who think those books are of the devil, you've never read them. You don't know. Trust me on that, okay? Trust your pastor. They're great literature, and they teach wonderful lessons, and they really are a gospel allegory, I promise. All right, I gotta move on, wrap up here. So, after this chapter, after Paul gets done with chapter five, Adam as a human, as a person fades from you. He doesn't bring him up again in the letter to the Romans. In fact, other than a few mentions in, two mentions in Luke's Gospel, and one, I believe, in the letter to Jude, and possibly one in 1 Timothy. I need to look those references up for you. Adam's never mentioned again in the New Testament. How about that? You'll look it up. You gotta cross reference or Concordance, or your computer can do it, but I'm pretty sure I'm right. That the historical Adam fades from you, and he's never a central player after this. Law and grace are like two different doctors. One diagnoses what's wrong with you, and the other one treats it, cures it. Law and grace are like two doctors. One diagnoses, and the other treats. And that's what Paul's getting at here. I like something else that Tim Keller says. "We do not need to put in more effort. We need a rescue. But sin, which the law points up, did not have a last word. We do not have to die in Adam. God's grace to humanity is greater than humanity's rebellion against God." Let me read that again. "God's grace to humanity is greater than humanity's rebellion against God. At the cross, grace overwhelms sin, and life triumphs over death." Grace wins. Grace is greater than your sin. The early church father Tertullian, I quoted him last week, said this, "Just as Jesus was crucified between two thieves, so the gospel is ever crucified between two errors," by which he means legalism and license. Legalism, the idea that you can be made right by your obedience and your basically avoidance of certain sins. And license or liberalism, which says you can be made right by just doing a bunch of good works. The Gospel of Jesus Christ says, "No. You can never avoid enough sins, and you can never do enough good works." No, the Gospel brings those two truths together. And so, because my time is going by quickly, and I know I'm sort of rushing at the end, that's what preachers do. We talk too long at the first part. I told you I was gonna get to something that I had never seen before, and let me just wrap up with this. I had not noticed this before. The overall letter to the Romans, the overall New Testament, the overall Bible, grace rules. Grace rules. God's grace is greater than your sin. God's grace is greater than all sin. Christ's death on the cross is more than enough to pay for your sins, my sins, everybody's sins that will ever live. As, I should have remembered this quote from last week. Somebody said, "If a thousand worlds filled with a thousand sinners, all of them worse than me." If such a thing exists, Christ's death would have been enough to pay for all of it. So grace wins. Grace rules. God's grace is greater than your sins. But something, and the overall tenor of this chapter is that Christ is greater than Adam. That's why Paul keeps saying, "How much more did Christ's work rule? How much more is Christ's work greater than Adam's? How much more is the grace greater than sin and so forth?" And so, I would have known that, but here's what I didn't see before. And that is, and I'll just give you two quotes here as I wrap it up. John Stott says, "Romans 5:12-21 gives us solid grounds for confidence that a very large number will be saved, and that the scope of Christ's work, although not universal, in other words, not everybody is saved, will be extremely extensive." Now, I would have known that. I would affirm that. I believed for a long, long time, the parable of the mustard seed, how it starts off really, really small and grows into the largest tree in all the garden, and all the birds come and nest in its branches. And so, I believe that the kingdom of God would grow larger than any other plant. And point of fact, today, there are around the world about 2.2 billion people profess to be Christians. Are they all? Probably not. God knows and I don't. But 2.2 billion profess to be Christians. And the Church of Jesus Christ is growing faster than it ever has. We don't see that in the West, but it's true. In Asia and Africa, South America, the Gospel is going better, and people are coming to Christ in greater numbers than ever before, even in places like China. Okay? So, the kingdom of God is growing faster than it ever has before. It's bigger and bigger and bigger, and I believe it's gonna keep on growing bigger until Jesus comes back. The second biggest faith movement ever is Islam, and it, depending on who you believe, has about 1.2, 1.3 billion. That's a lot, but it's close to as big as the Church, the Kingdom of God. So, I have for a long time known that a large, large number of people would get saved, and praise God. But I never thought of it in terms of, well, would it be more people who are Christians than not? And I don't know the answer mathematically. I don't know. But in reading these commentaries, I came across this by Charles Hodge, who is an old warhorse that are formed... by Charles Hodge, who is an old warhorse that reformed faith. So of course, he's right. And here's what Hodge had to say. Just give it to your forge's worth. "The benefits of redemption shall far outweigh the evils of the fall. The number of the saved shall doubtless greatly exceed the number of the lost. We have reason to believe that the lost shall bear to the saved no greater proportion than the inmates of the prison due to the mass of the community." Now, I don't know if that's true. I can think of some other passages that make me think, "No, that's probably not true." But what if it is? Wouldn't that be incredible? That there'd be way more people who come to know Christ and therefore live forever in heaven for all eternity? I guess it's redundant, "Live forever for all eternity in the presence of God," than there are who'll be lost. CS Lewis' great divorce kind of hints at that. Wouldn't that be incredible? I don't know. Maybe it's true, maybe it's not. I love that thought. And on that thought, I'll wrap it up for you tonight. I hope this has been helpful. I know I've had to rush some really deep theological constructs, and if I did nothing more, maybe introduce you to some terms and some ideas, and maybe about the best I could do for you tonight. But thank you again for being with me. May the Lord bless you and keep you. Make His face to shine upon you and be gracious unto you. May He lift up His countenance upon you and give you His peace. Amen. See you next time.